Our, March first, twenty twenty-three, City of Ellsworth Planner Board Meeting. Can we introduce ourselves, please?
Hello, Molly Friedland.
Nelson Giel, member.
John DeLeo, Chair.
Mike Hingy, Alternate.
Patrick Lyons, Alternate.
And, uh, even if Mark comes, you're voting Patrick. If Mark doesn't come, you're voting.
Okay.
But if Mark comes, you're off the hook.
I've got plenty to say.
You can say something. Adoption of the minutes from the, can we, yeah, can we close the door? Adoption of the minutes from the February first, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three special meeting. Is there any additions or deletions, any changes? You have a motion?
The minutes is written.
There are a second?
Second.
All in favor? Raise your hand, Mark.
It's my husband's fault.
Okay, we're gonna switch the items a little bit. Three was a preliminary plan review for the-
Hey, John, there's the minutes for the special meeting on the fifteenth.
Yeah, but I listened to that. I called through. February first and the fifteenth. Yep, okay, no problem. Uh, three was the Arbor House. We're gonna switch that to the, we're gonna handle the sketch plan review for major use site plan entitled Proposed Commercial Development for Apple, applicant, all rig USA acquisitions LLC and owner, Ellsworth Number One LLC. The proposal is to create a commercial building with three storefronts. The subject property is an approximately two-acre lot located at six Down East Highway, tax map one twenty-eight, Lot Eight, in the commercial zoning district.
You guys, just over here.
Obviously, I'll-
Yep. And could you introduce yourself, gentlemen?
Good evening, for the record, Matt Long, basing with older engineering with Civil Engineers. With me is Bill Bray, who said the traffic is often brought in along as the case of a traffic question. Appreciate the board's time this evening. As was noted, we're here for a sketch plan review for, for a major use site development plan for a, for a project deserving greater than five thousand square feet, or having a building greater than five thousand square feet. The site's at six Down East Highway. I'm sure most of you or all of you are familiar with it. There's a right-in, right-out driveway that serves the Hampton Inn in, in the back there. There's the vacant parcel right along Down East Highway in, in the front. It's bordered by Hampton Inn to the rear and also next to the Walgreens. My understanding is that, that parcel used to be, contain a former main DOT facility up until around two thousand nine, and then also an Exxon, maybe around where the Walgreens is. When they did the Hampton, they, they cleared this lot, and I think it's been vacant ever since. The building's proposed to consist of a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot coffee shop with drive-thru, a fourteen-hundred-square-foot restaurant, but not a, not really a sit-down restaurant. It'd be more like a sub, sub-shop type restaurant, and a twenty-eight-hundred-fifty-square-foot general retail store. Some of, some of the highlights from the site plan that we've, we presented with the sketch plan, one of the, the first things we look at, especially with the coffee shops, is the drive-through queue and the car queue. We've set the, the drive-through window on the, the, um, the existing drive side with a, a drive-through queue that loops all the way in the rat, around the back. It's twelve-plus cars long. To, to the end of the queue, we found more and more these days that the queues are getting longer and longer at some of these fast food restaurants. I know the five or six-car queues don't work anymore. You certainly probably see them sometimes backing out into the roads and things, so we've been going with about eleven to thirteen cars. It's been, been the general request, so, so a long queue in the back there. The drive-through's set up so that if, for whatever reason, there was a one or two extra cars that backed out, they'd back out into the, the interior parking area and not into the road or into a shared driveway or anything like that. The, the site will also consist of a, of a patio area that'll be just in front of the coffee shop. You'll see there's kind of a little landscape island there. That'll just have a few seats for the coffee shop and be surrounded by a guardrail for car protection. Some other things that we'll present at the preliminary plan, obviously this plan's very preliminary at, at this point, but we'll do a full lighting plan with dark sky compliant lighting, a full landscape plan with interior landscaping within the parking area, also along the Down East Highway front edge. There's about a fifty-foot landscape buffer that we're maintaining there. We won't present, plant, uh, arid ivy or anything too big, but certainly shade trees and some, and some brushes along the front to kind of dress up that front edge along, along the highway. We'll be doing a full stormwater design. We actually have a preliminary meeting with main D E P tomorrow afternoon just to run through what they're gonna want for the design, so we expect that there'll be a stormwater design component. We'll be filing for a stormwater permit with main D E P, so they'll be reviewing it as well, as, as I suspect the city will review the stormwater design as well. We'll also be filing with main DOT for a traffic movement permit. The trip generation is anticipated to be over a hundred trips, so we'll be following that process concurrently with the, with the board review process. With me is Bill Bray. We haven't done the full traffic movement permit submission or anything like that, but if you wanna get the quick presentation of, of what we'll be doing and what the traffic line looks like.
Good evening, I'm Bill Bray. I work with Barton and La Judas, and our office is in Scarborough. I've been doing traffic engineering work for about thirty-five years, closer to forty years, I hate to admit, but, uh, this project, we've, we've just begun. We've, we've developed a trip generation for the project, so we've based it on, again, a coffee shop, a fast food without a drive-through, and then just a retail pad. And I won't go into the, to the full details of it, but generally, coffee shops are the, in these, out of these three types of development are the high trip generator. Combined, though, adding them all up, the peak hour, which is what we have to analyze everything on, occurs sometime probably during the mid-morning, closer to like eleven. That's when the coffee shop has a peak, and then the, uh, the sub, the sub-shop or the sandwich shop also might peak at the same time. And during that time period, we are projecting that three hundred and forty trips would be generated during that time period. Main DOT has a two-tier system. If you generate between a hundred and two hundred trips, that's the first tier, and it has a different set of standards. Anything over two hundred trips is, is the, uh, something that has a much more strenuous and a complicated review process. We're just starting to develop the application right now. We have, like I say, we have developed a trip generation. I would like to point out, most of the time with a coffee shop, whether it's a Dunkin' or a Starbucks or an Roma Joe's, majority of the traffic is actually already on the roadway system. They just choose to, uh, make a turn into a coffee shop, buy their coffee, and then come right back out and just continue in the same direction as they were going to. A study that was done for Dunkin' Donuts in two thousand and seven, uh, based on their information, I think there was seven stores that were actually interviewed, approximately seventy percent of the traffic that's generated by a Dunkin' store, which has been reviewed and approved by the main DOT, actually is in fact passed by trips. Those trips are already there. They just simply take a right turn in and then a right turn back out, or a left turn in and a left turn out. So we've gone through that. We've used a similar process with the, uh, fast food facility. We're estimating that about thirty-five percent of that will be passed by trips. The rest of it would be primary on new trips to the roadway system. We've, uh, completed a preliminary trip assignment, and I was telling Matt this evening before we came, walked over here to the meeting, that I'm glad I came up and looked at it today and, and didn't wait a little bit longer because it's, it looks a whole lot different on Google Earth than it does when you actually come up and see it. And, and clearly, I'm gonna change my, uh, the way I've assigned the trips right now. I think there's a, a need to do that, so I'm gonna kind of refine that. And we're looking to probably have our application into the main Department of Transportation somewhere's around the first of April. We have pulled all of the crash data for the segment of, um, High Street and Down East Highway, all the way from Short Street all the way up to Foster Street. There are unfortunately, uh, three high-crash locations in that area, and I'm sure that you probably, each of you could probably tell me where they are, and I, I know where they are, not because I've asked for the data, but, uh, we will be going through a detailed review of those intersections. I tried to do a little bit of it today, but the traffic is so busy that I wasn't really able to do it. So I'm actually gonna go out early in the morning, tomorrow morning, and, and try to spend some more time looking at what's happening out there, the accident patterns. Just to give you one example of it, again, I'm sure you are very familiar with the intersection of Short Street on, Short and High Street is a high-crash location, and every one of the accidents involves someone pulling out of, pulling out of the cowwash, trying to cross High Street to go down Short Street. I think there's a total of ten accidents there, and I believe nine of them are in fact the same exact, it's almost like somebody took a rubber stamp and just stamped all, all of them on, on the diagram. We'll be going into considerably greater detail when main DOT holds their scoping meeting. Clearly, the community will be involved in that process. We will, again, we will provide DOT with sections one through six of the permit, and then at that, uh, scoping meeting, which will be held probably here in this facility, it has before, uh, DOT will actually tell us what we need to do for further studies, whether we, what intersections we need to look at and for what time periods. I can go a little bit deeper, but I still need to do a lot more work before I have all of the answers to the, what your question might be. Oh, and I'm sorry, I should've pointed out, we do have traffic counts that were collected last summer for the intersections that, on the signalized intersections on both sides of the proposed driveway. So we do have that information as well.
Thanks, Bill. Yep, so we'll be going through that DOT process, and I think that's about a five-month process, so in, in the city will be tied into that. DOT's pretty thorough, as I understand it, so we're going through, going through the wringer there.
Do you intend to, so you wouldn't come back with a full application until you've completed the DOT process, or are you looking to do that-
We'd probably try to run it somewhat concurrently, yeah. So I think we'd have the application in, but in the scoping meeting, and I think that'd be going on, but I think we try to do them generally at the, at the same time if we could. Stefano was nice enough to meet with us actually a couple of times to review the project just so we could get initial comments from them. They, they obviously had good comments. One was just pedestrian traffic. It's not pictured on our sketch, but we will provide a pedestrian connection to, to Down East Highway just for, for someone, people that are using the sidewalk, and also, the question came up is, what about people that might be at the Hampton Inn that wanna come and get a coffee in the morning, which I suspect could be a thing that happens? So we're, we're looking at putting a sidewalk along the, the existing driveway there just to accommodate that pedestrian movement. I know fire had, had a question about access, so we'll model their fire truck in our model and show that, that turning movement. We expect that they'll be able to make the, the circulation all the way through the site because we do have a bypass lane around the back there, but we'll make sure to show and demonstrate that on our, on our plans. And I know one question that came up with Steph was that the Hampton Inn, the, the intersection by Walgreens and the Hampton Inn, just, uh, just west of our site, that a lot of cars, if they're gonna be taking a left out of the site, will likely use that intersection. I know Bill is considering that in his study. So that'll be a thing we look at as we, as we go through. So, so I guess our hope tonight will be just any, any feedback or comments that we could try to incorporate into our design as we move forward. Our, our goal would be to have a design that you guys like when we come in and submit with preliminary, so anything we can incorporate would be appreciated.
What about landscaping? Are there any, obviously you need proper sightlines along the road for, you know, safety ingress and egress, but I like trees.
Yeah, yes, like trees is a great comment. Yeah, we, we, I would expect, we, we have a landscape architecture team, so if I sound like I don't know what I'm talking about because I'm not a landscape architect, but they, um, they'll, they'll take a look at it, and I know generally what I might expect is quite a few street trees along, along the front edge mixed with some, with some bushes, not so many that you can't see the building, but enough that your eye's broken up and, and it looks good.
Do you have potential tenants or that all?
Um, I, I believe we have tentative tenants. You could probably guess, guess who they are. I know that a coffee shop, I think is a, I think they're pretty close to having that as a certain tenant. Same with, um, kind of a quick-service restaurant. I think the, the retail use, they might have one in mind, but, but not yet. Our applicant couldn't quite make it tonight, so I'm, I'm pretty sure we could disclose that at the preliminary meeting, but-
No. I like coffee and sandwiches, so it's interesting knowing which ones, if they're new to the mix here.
I think they'll be, my understanding is they're new to the area, or somewhat new to it.
Bill, you mentioned, you've already gotten the first report from DOT.
Yes, I have, yes.
What I'd also like you to do, though, is, and I assume that was the three-year report they normally give?
Yeah, two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one.
What I'd like you to do, though, is to go back a little in time, and somebody's gonna have to look it up to see what the crash report numbers would be when Rite Aid was open, the three-year period. Whenever Rite Aid closed, go back three years, uh, Rite Aid is right across from, from the lot that you're gonna build on. So, that Rite Aid location, especially as you turn off High Street, taking a left onto Route One, there's, there's a driveway into Rite Aid right in that corner, which was a high-crash. I used to be the chief of police, so when Rite Aid was open, that was one of the high-crash locations. So I'd like to go back a little to see, you know, if somebody does go in there, uh, you know, what the, how many crashes were there when somebody was actually in Rite Aid?
Do you have by chance any idea of when they close, just so that I know? There's a limit of how far I can go back, that's the only thing. I just wanna make sure I, I'm able to get what you want.
Somebody's gonna have to look it up. If, if DOT cannot provide that information, the police department has, uh, their crash reporting system that they use to write the crash reports, uh, should be able to generate that report, and they can cover any time period, time period.
We'll get it somehow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's kind of one or two is, uh, you mentioned, you found that most of, a lot of these, the coffee shops are, are pass-bys, which if you were coming into town on Route One, which strangely, okay, is Route One South, but it's High Street North. But, so if, if you're gonna make a right turn into that, it's gonna be easy enough to make a right turn out and continue on your way. How do you figure people are gonna access your site coming south on High Street? Because what I envision is them coming to the traffic light at Walmart, I mean, at McDonald's, taking a left, and then right after, there's a little raised median, taking a left, do a U-turn across three lanes of traffic, and come back into that right-in. So, I mean, how do you figure people, you know, are they gonna go in through the Walgreens traffic light? They may not see that coffee shop there.
Yeah, what you just described doesn't sound ideal. I think our hope would be that they're gonna come in through the, um, the Walgreens traffic light, but I guess that would be a person that knows it's there, that's from town, that, that knows that they wanna get coffee. I think we'll take a look at that movement rate.
What about signage?
Absolutely. I would, I would expect that folks that know how to get there will find the easiest and the most direct way to get there. It's the people that are out, outstate or perhaps are not familiar, and will they even know that there's a coffee shop there? I, I know, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm just proposing that as something to, to think about.
And when you have that discussion, the city has a discussion with MOT, uh, DOT, is, I'm gonna throw out that, that little raised island should be extended, probably another hundred feet down, Down East Highway, to make it even harder, because I guarantee ya, people will make that left turn and cut across three lanes of traffic to get into that coffee shop or, or restaurant. No doubt in my mind.
Well, I can tell you they already do, because every now and then you take a look at this section right here with all gravel, and there are tire tracks where you see they'd cut right across to go back into Walgreens. Right, right, straight through the gravel.
So I think that needs to be a big topic, a topic of discussion with DOT.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I was just, I wonder if there's a way to include signage at the, that light that says coffee shop, sub-shop.
Yeah, so wayfinding signage is something that seems easy enough to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's something great. The only thing I'm not sure is their rights to put that signage there, but that'll be, we'll ask that question for sure.
Or why not no left turn?
Well, there, so you want, you wanna encourage a left turn at the light at the Walgreens?
Yeah, no, so I'm saying at that intersection, um, that we're gonna be operating off of, why can't we say no left turn there?
No U-turn would be better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you guys might be talking about different spots. This definitely should be no left turn, hundred percent.
Exactly.
This, this is what, this is what John was talking about, this island, and extending it so that it makes it almost impossible to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, they normally have signs in the little islands, their life expectancy is not very long.
So my only thing with that is, is extending the island, you're limiting us to get our fire trucks to cross the lane and into that access, because we're not gonna come through the Hampton Inn where there's pedestrians walking out, not paying attention, coming through. It's a lot easier for us to slowly injure our truck across with our lights on, going across and into that entrance that's already troublesome as it is, that we had already spoke about with, with the, with the developers here, um, on trying to, what we can do to try to make that, make our egress into that initial, into the initial roadway, not getting into the actual parking lot, but getting over and across and getting in, it's, it's already a problem for us to get our trucks in there. And that's our, that's our only access, and if you go another hundred feet, that really limits us to, that we have to basically drive up the road. Now we've gotta try to spin a truck around in the, in a four-lane, in the four-lane, and then try to come back down and then back in.
But for your, I mean, obviously you can't predict how many times you're gonna be there, but for your one trip to that location per year versus cars going across three lanes of traffic.
But how can you, you just said yourself, though, you can't sit there and say that how many times in a year we'll be there, so you can't state that with that one trip.
You're right.
We don't know how many trips we'll make it there.
And you got a traffic light at Walgreens.
Right, but I'm not gonna go through Hampton Inn's parking lot to make access to their location with pedestrians walking from in and out of that, going through somebody else's parking lot to get to this location when I have access from the main road into the parking lot as it is.
Well, I believe Hampton Inn is, is, owns this piece of property. The whole, this whole lot is owned by one person, or one company, correct?
I, I think this new lot will be owned by a new entity, but, but you're correct that it is part of one lot, yeah.
The, Tom, the, the time it would add to drive up and cut across Short Street to two lefts, that, that'd be too much time in your opinion added to the-
Our, our talk was is that we would come up, we hit up on Douglas Highway, and then we would come straight in because that's the quickest and the fastest way to get into that property. Their, the talks was is they're gonna put a hydrant right in on their edge, on the turning radius going into their parking lot, and that's where we're gonna pick up the hydrant. But for us to sit there and to go loop, to go up, loop around, then come back, we still gotta cut across all that traffic anyways just to get over to the, get back over to the right side to then come back down again.
I have a question about this. If we did extend the island out one hundred feet, would widening the entrance on the other side of the islands defeat the purpose of extending the island? Do you think it's a point of this island? Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a driveway behind Walgreens that comes close to this lot. Looking at this site plan, it looks like the grassy area between the parking lot and Walgreens is a place for a road, but-
If they can get, they can get the rest of it.
That's right. I mean, obviously, coming in through the Walgreens driveway, you'd have to talk to Walgreens, but it looks like that, that grassy area to the, roughly to the west of the parking area is owned by the Hampton Inn.
You have to lock the existing driveway?
Well, I'm just kinda looking at it. I mean, this, this grassy area.
Oh, that, yeah. Yeah, yeah, this, it, we probably wanna take it back to the opposite thing, but it's a, it's a good comment. I mean, the, the signage is an option if we put it like in a ball or something like that, or maybe a mountable, um, island so the fire could get over it, although that doesn't, also allows maybe a car to get over it, so we'll, we'll take a look at it, and I don't wanna-
And whatever, uh, impact there is on, especially with the traffic light at Walgreens, uh, those traffic lights are interconnected, and there's, it's called a centrally managed traffic control signal system. So somebody, I don't know, SABEGO still handles that.
I think Jason works with SABEGO, yeah.
Jason would have to get together with, with SABEGO to see if there's any impact on-
It sounds like we'll have, we have the traffic safety committee going again, so it sounds like we'll have maybe a specific, uh, meeting with the DOT about this and potentially invite the applicant and Thomas for fire to have a whole conversation about it.
So you say you're gonna, you've looked at the property and you've decided you're gonna read, readjust things on the property with the building and the parking lot? Is that what I heard you say?
Uh, no, not, not at this time. I think, uh, what, what Bill had mentioned was that after reviewing the study, he's gonna, uh, relook at his, his routing. I know it was a comment Steph had too, which is the idea that maybe a lot of cars are gonna, or a good portion of the cars will use the Hampton Inn, go through Hampton Inn and use that light. So just modeling his tra, transportation studies so that the cars are heading that direction if they wanna take a left out, or maybe even sometimes a right out.
So will you have an access easement granted by Hampton Inn owners?
I, I suspect so. I, I don't have that answer offhand, but yeah.
You mentioned there'd be some seating outside of the coffee shop. Is that going to be shared with the proposed restaurant, or will they be very, very separate or somewhat combined?
My guess is they might be separate. They don't always share all that well, um, so I think they'll want that for, for their use, so, yeah.
And then as far as the proposed retail space, just curious more broadly, like what is the, what is the vibe? What are the potential operating hours? What, what do you anticipate the clientele visiting to be, like local people, people at just the Hampton Inn? What's the overall vibe?
I, I guess, um, it would be, I guess it would be local, local people, wouldn't be like a high-trip generation use, it wouldn't be, uh, use this open earlier late, it would be kind of just like a standard. I would say of, of low, of low-generation type retail use.
And it's just proposed at this point?
Um, correct, yeah, yeah. But obviously, our, our submission will be somewhat locked into the parking numbers that we provide in the traffic study, so, um, they'll have to make a decision before we submit, before too long that that's definitely what's going in.
I see a couple of comments about sidewalks, walkability. It's a point I'd like to emphasize, even though this is a, a dense retail space, it's not super walkable. And so every time we see a project coming in this zone, it really always comes up, what can we do better to, to make this more walkable? So sort of any puzzle piece that fits in here, then we'd be looking for that, too.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. That was a comment from Steph, and I, I know it's not shown on this concept, but we're, we're going to as part of our final plan connectivity to, to the public sidewalk at the street, and then also connectivity through, through the Hampton Inn, just so it's all, all interconnected.
And I like the amount of queue you have for the, for the coffee shop and the fact that there's actually more that, if it does back up, will back up through the parking lot, because the last two coffee shops that came to Ellsworth, uh, their traffic numbers were woefully off, and at both locations, cars go out into the road.
Yeah.
And this is certainly not a location that we would want that.
No, certainly not.
But you have considerably more space here, even, especially through the parking lot also.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I feel like depending on when the coffee shop or a restaurant was built, you almost see like five or six cars, like, and you see why it backs out. That's, you know, it's not a long queue at all.
So see, Steph talked about, Public Works talked about location of snow storage.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there anything mentioned about location of dumpsters?
Um, I meant, I meant to mention that, so we're looking at the northeast of the plan or the, the back right if you're looking at the plan regular, so kind of off the corner of, of the drive-through, um, would be the, the least visible but also accessible for, for everybody.
How about, do you have an overhead or underground electrical?
Uh, I suspect underground.
Okay, so the location of those needs to be on your plan also.
Yeah, we have water and sewer and-
Any concern for, like, delivery trucks for the property?
Uh, no, we're not expecting to have, um, use like big delivery trucks. They usually use like a box truck, so like the biggest truck is usually like thirty feet long or something like that, so they'll use, um, they'll honestly probably just use the parking spaces almost all the time, and if they needed to, to stage somewhere, they could stage in the pat bypass lane of, of the drive-through, but I think most of the time it'd be just using the parking spaces.
I guess I would ask you about code enforcement's comment about if outdoor tables to be added, there'll be, need to be more parking spaces.
Yeah, sure. When we did our initial parking calculations, it's, it's based on number of seats. We're just starting to get the floor plans from the, from the architect, you know, over the next couple of days, so, um, if there, there will be outdoor seats, so they just wanna make sure we're including those seats in our parking calculation, um, the interior plus, um, whatever exterior seats there are.
Do you have any idea, if you had to add more parking places, where they would be?
Um, it probably to the, to the east of, of the site, if, if we- Um, it probably to the, to the east of, of the site, if, if we had to do, we'd have to take a look at it. I kind of like that we have the, the 50 foot rougher in the, in the front. So I wouldn't want to put more parking out there if, if we had to. Um, we tried to do a pretty conservative assumption on the number of seats. So I'm hoping that we're, we overshot it rather than undershot it.
Thank you.
So Bill, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at this. Full disclosure, I've never turned left out of here. Is, is the visibility, uh, up the street in this direction? Is that, is that pretty decent?
I, I measured site distance this morning.
I'm sorry, right ahead, right ahead.
I measured the site distance this morning. It was 375 feet. I believe that it's longer than that, but there was just no way for me to get in a position to measure it without walking basically up the lane. And I, I kind of wanted to be able to go home afterwards. So I chose not to do that, but, uh.
They can just tie that to the landscaping plan, just not putting anything on that section.
I'm comfortable with 400 feet there though. I mean, it's well in excess of what you need for 35 miles an hour.
No, that, that's a great point because of the way the lot bends. Um, there could be a section.
Angle's not in your favor.
Yeah.
John, do you want me to read, um, Rex's notes that he provided me? I brought them.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I don't have it with me.
Bill, you may have touched on a lot of this, but our traffic engineer couldn't make it tonight, but he wanted to make sure that, um, you know, we got these across. So, and maybe repeat the stuff you mentioned.
Who is the traffic engineer?
Uh, Rick Lyles.
Okay.
He's a planning board member. He's a, he's a planning board member, but he was a traffic engineer by trade.
Okay, all right, good.
Uh, so he says, uh, his major concern is traffic generation, traffic related impacts in an area which is already confusing congested. Um, you know, traffic study has to be undertaken that addresses traffic circulation on the site, impacts driveway entrances and exits, and, uh, any directly impacted adjacent nearby intersections, including level of service, queuing and vehicular safety. And then he discusses, uh, impacts on pedestrian and bicycle circulation and their safety is also, should also be addressed. Said, well, ITE trip generation software is more or less the industry standard. Uh, developers should consider obtaining local data. I know you mentioned doing traffic counts last summer, that actual traffic counts.
Yeah, we actually counted the, uh, the two similar sections. We have that, uh.
Oh, okay. Um, and so the analysis can be more reflective, um, of our seasonal fluctuations. Because during the summer, we do have a lot more, uh, pass by customers than in the winter or off seasons. And IT doesn't capture that all the time. And then, uh, that also affects total, uh, traffic generated as well, as well as turning movements. And he just suggested that, um, I can give you or work with you to get this data, but potential or other new, uh, nearby developments that affect traffic.
Yeah, I, I, I'll have to contact, that's part of what I have to put in the application for DOT. And I, I can reach out to you and you can give me a list of them and I can, I absolutely have to include those.
Yeah. And then, I guess the fact more of what John was talking about, but potential plans for modification of intersections, uh, on the state or local level on that are being considered. So I'm trying to focus a bit into that.
Are those notes available that you just read?
I, I can, yeah, provide.
Okay, all right, good. I have a hard time hearing and writing at the same time, so I just. The DOT will go through all of that and they'll process any of those. Each of those, each of those items will be a part of that traffic movement process.
Any other questions?
Just from staff's side, uh, a small thing, but when you, again, for preliminary plan, final plan, zoom out to show the whole commercial subdivision here and then the Walgreens light.
For content, yeah.
For context, yeah. And I think.
Fire can move.
That was it from staff?
Anything else, Patrick? No? I guess we're done.
Just one comment. We don't always get the overlays on top of the satellite imagery. It's super easy on the eyes. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. But thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next up is preliminary plan review of a major use site plan and major subdivision entitled Old Mill Property Development for applicant Tim Stone and owner Arbor House Properties LLC. The proposal is to create a 17 lot major subdivision. The subject property is approximately 30 acre lot located at 30 Old Mill Road, tax map 41, lot 53 in the neighborhood, urban and limited residential zone in Des Moines. I thought they were here for you.
This is Zach Graham, I'm, uh, representing the applicant. But maybe just tell me when you need me to go, um, just because I'm at a distance here.
Thanks, Zach.
So Will, why don't you introduce yourself and perhaps the folks on the screen?
Okay, sounds good. Uh, yeah, my name is again Zach Graham with Graham Engineering. Um, Tracy Daniels is also here with Graham Engineering. We were retained by Arbor House Properties in the last couple of weeks to take this through preliminary, uh, this hearing here and then on through final, um, for the civil design of it. I believe, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have Diane, um, uh, Diane, I'll forgive me your last name if I, if I butcher it more a bit. Is that right? Yeah. All right, excellent. Yeah, our traffic engineer, uh, she's on, she's here as well. And then the, um, Tim Stone, one of the owners with Arbor House is there in person. So I guess, yeah, thank you number one for facilitating a remote meeting for us here, uh, tonight. And, um, I know you've seen a lot of the detail of this project previously in the sketch plan, um, application that Scott Bradshaw made on February 1st, so earlier this month. But, um, so I'll go, I, I will hit on some of the high points of the, of the plan, um, just to review everything. And then if you have any questions, certainly available for it. So, um, you know, this, this project off of, um, Old Mill Road, um, here is a, is a proposed, uh, cluster development. This is a development, and let me go here, um, or a property, I should say, that currently has split zoning. Um, a portion of it being the shoreline zone, a small urban zone and then a neighborhood zone as well. As a cluster development, um, looking at that, there's a total of 17 lots proposed, um, in the overall subdivision. And, um, the, that gives a net average area per lot of about 42,185 square feet. If all of this were within the shoreline zone, the allowable, um, density is 40,000. So as an overall aggregate development, it, even though there's, there's allowances for higher density, um, within, um, the urban and the neighborhood zones, it meets the shoreline zone within the overall property. Um, also just to point out, um, that there's two open space lots, one up here along the shoreline that, and then one here in the, um, on, on the east side, um, that are open space common area lots. Uh, one thing really, the vision of the owners and developers of this property is a light touch. They really want to, their desire is to maintain the overall character of the property, um, for its future uses. And so that's part of, you know, why they're on board with really this lighter touch, the lighter density of development for the overall project. Um, the, the overall use is consistent with what you've seen before of tiny homes which are represented in green and then treehouses, um, which are represented in the yellow. Uh, the, the changes that, um, well, before I go there, um, you know, if we need to go into more detail on the TIS, obviously Diane, Diane is here. But really just a quick summary there, you know, this is generating, you know, five to eight one-way trips during peak hour and rule no significant, really no huge significant impacts for, no significant impact really at all on the level of service at the intersections. So, um, there's also, I was previously submitted with the sketch plan and then resubmitted with the preliminary, uh, package of protected resources investigation. Um, that was included, the, it, the impacts of those wetlands, vernal pools, streams, 100-year flood plain, those have all been mapped. They were mapped on the sketch plan and they've been mapped on, they're still mapped on this preliminary plan, um, with this. Now the vernal pools, um, a, a couple, one thing to point out here, this future phase four over here on the north end of the development, there are potential vernal pools that were identified within the protected resources investigation. Because of the timing of the project and just the seasonal requirements for the final determination on whether they're vernal pools or not, um, can't be completed at this time. And so what's being requested at this point of the preliminary is that essentially a note, which I would assume would be a condition of, of your approval, that this phase can't be, uh, constructed until the, there's a follow-up on the determination of those vernal pools as well as wetlands permitting would be, you know, that, that documentation be submitted to staff accordingly. Some of the minor changes that happened since the sketch plan that you'll notice, one is on the sketch plan, this area right in here, you'll notice that there was a modification to that, really limiting the road impact, um, and bringing in some of this development. That was primarily done just from a grading standpoint, again, a lighter touch to the overall development. Additional notes were added to the preliminary plan, um, specifically about, um, sale conditions of the properties that, um, for deed restrictions on, uh, property specifically within that shoreline zone. And then additionally, the Knox box requirements for each of the tiny homes. And then specific to what I brought up before about the potential vernal pools and that really being a, uh, I guess our understanding what would be a condition of approval and a restriction on this approval until that, uh, follow-up documentation is provided to the city. So with that, that's, that's an overall summary of this preliminary submittal. I'm going to stop there and, and turn it over to any questions and discussion.
I've got all kinds of questions.
Go right ahead.
So I have a question, um, fact four. Uh, actually they all relate to the same thing. I've had a meeting with our 911 addressing officer. And you have a road in the subdivision named Union Way that cannot be used. We already have a Union Street in Ellsworth. And by 911 requirements as well as prerogative of the addressing officer, that has to be changed. He, uh, would prefer to see Old Mill Way extend all the way to the end to the T-turn. That way you don't break that road up because it continues on because you're going to break it right off and then, then start another new road. So that's one thing. The other thing is the two roads between lot 17 and lot two. He looked at that and was trying to figure out where those names came from. Well, I can tell you those came from J.R. Tolkien's Lord of the Rings. And under his, under his purview and jurisdiction, he prefers to have those changed to common names. I can imagine a dispatcher in a hurry trying to say Fimberthel Lane and get it out properly. Or somebody, a child trying to say, well, I live on this, I don't, I can't tell you the name of the road. So with Wendell and Fimberthel Lane need to be changed to common names according to the 911 addressing officer.
I had those thoughts too.
You had those thoughts too? Yeah. I can imagine.
And he, he always, private roads, and I'm sure he'll go along with this, always end with way. So he probably won't let you have circle or lane, any private road. Because that basically then tells police, fire, this is a private road.
Yeah.
What about Frodo? That's easy enough.
A, a kid would recognize that name probably.
Harry Potter.
Yeah. I, I don't see, uh, yeah, the, um, yeah, agreed on the Union Way, that could be Old Mill Way. And there's been talk, there's been discussions all along, or from the beginning. I, I think the story goes it was 1:00 AM in the morning and needs some road names. So absolutely we can.
You know, I get. You know, I get, I get it as far as the, um, atmosphere. I mean, you've got treehouses. Why not have those kind of names? I mean, it kind of fits. However, it really doesn't fit for the 911 addressing as well as, I mean, I guess we could bring a dispatcher in here and see if they can pronounce it, huh? So, but anyway, so, um, those, those actually need to be addressed. The other question I have for Tom, lot 17, um, the turning radiuses on either end, are you, are you okay with those turning radiuses?
They're, they're supposed to be providing a.
Turning template?
A template. At the next meeting.
All right. That's all I have.
What, um, what state permits do you anticipate requiring? Is this because of the number of lots, are you looking at site plan slowed up review or something?
Yeah, through the DEP? Yes. Yeah. And we're looking into that right now. We're trying, we actually would like, we're, again, we're about a week into this. We, we wanted after this meeting to get a meeting set up with city water and sewer to discuss that and then have a pre-application with the DEP for that, uh, site meeting. And then the, um, you know, stormwater permits, um, with the state. And then there is some questions with the water and sewer that we need to work through with, with the city prior to final in order to, um, in order to, I guess, inform that pre-application meeting and exactly what we need to do through the DEP. I'm sorry, what's that?
I was just saying, that's the only question I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that was mentioned in your water letters, sewer letters, and I asked Matt about this, was your idea of somewhere down the road adding eight four-bedroom houses. Is that news to you? Because.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, providing a what analysis?
Well, it was included in, I believe, both the letters that went to the water company and the sewer department.
Yeah, it's just, it's mentioned on those letters and then the, uh, utility plan where I, I think the understanding is they're trying to be as thorough as possible and saying that in the future there may be houses added to this. And what my suggestion would be is I wouldn't worry about it. You know, the idea's has to happen 10 or 20 years down the road. So like, uh, you'll have to cross that bridge and come back to planning board at some point when that does happen anyway.
I was just, it seemed, seemed like it was kind of, oh, here's something else we're going to do, but, um.
I don't think we have plans to do that in the future.
And so it's something that we'll have to come back to planning board anyway. I wouldn't worry about, you know, calculating for it or complicating what the plan actually is going to be. In the meantime, so just remember those references would probably be good.
Okay, I can scratch that off. Guess on lot, uh, 11, Tom. I mean, it looks like, uh, some of the houses are close to where the parking places are, but some have, looks like short walking pass. Lot 11 is, that's a maybe 100-foot path. Any issues with you dragging a hose to that or, I mean, that's not big enough to drive to, is it?
No, no. The, you know, most of our hoses are, you know, pre-connected to 200 feet anyways. You know, but we can add hose fairly simply and easily. Most of these treehouses are, are roughly about 450 gallons per to put out a fully volved treehouse. The other thing is that they're also going to have to be putting in a walking, um, actual pathway, like a wooden pathway for us to have easy access to the location as well if we need to bring a stretcher or anything out there.
With lights, with the lights.
With lights. I forgot to mention the lights.
And signage.
And then this is something, I mean, I talked about, we talked a little bit about, I mean, you, you have this whole plan broken into lots and it was, I said. I mean, you have this whole plan broken into lots and it was, I said, well, possibility in the future that you would sell them.
We hope not.
Okay.
Because that's not our goal.
Right. But I mean, I think, I mean, something like that would have to come back to the board. I mean, we'd have to make sure there's an HOA.
Right, so there's a note on the plan discussing before any lots can be sold, they have to provide that information. Anyway, this can be more specific. I mentioned the road association, utility maintenance, and maintenance of the open, of the common area space. If there's anything additionally like adds to that note in terms of maintenance within the subdivision, we can add there.
And then in here, there was, there was mentioned the possibility that the water department or the developer wants a peer review on the water issue. Could you explain that a little?
Yeah, so, you know, Public Works and the water department looked at the water plan. They had some concerns about it. So instead of requesting the peer review be done from the planning board and then the developer paying for it, the water department just went ahead and did it themselves, so that's fine. And we don't have a full report back from Warren and Curran on their full opinion on what the water situation is, but Lisa told me that the initial reaction is that something more will have to be done to make sure there's enough pressure, water pressure to all these sites. But we don't have that report just yet.
So I mean, the water line, the sewer line, both come down Old Mill Road a short distance? Is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
And what's the water line that comes down? Two-inch?
There's a two-inch water line now, Old Mill Road.
And so, I mean, so Reggie's still trying to determine whether the two-inch line is...
Also, they, they're, it's not really Reggie determining, but they, Lisa and Reggie determined that there could be an issue with the water, so they're asking Warren and Curran to look into it with more detail to provide. If there is gonna be an issue, there's some alternatives that can be done to mitigate.
I mean, I guess in the back of your mind, you know, if you were thinking of adding more houses, would now be the time to put in a bigger water line? I mean, if that's in the back of your mind.
I think that was just almost a theoretical thing. It wasn't actually to try to meet code or something.
It was too thorough.
It was a little too thorough.
Okay.
I mean, our goal is we're not trying to build big houses back in there. Do you want one big treehouse back there?
One thing I was gonna ask was, you have the 100-year floodplain marked off, and just, I'm throwing out there, we're concerned with it, but you have a dam upstream. And I kind of got an idea, Mike has been on some table talk exercises, that what happens if the dam fails, the catastrophic failure? Is that something that you've been required to look at or would?
I don't, I don't know.
Is that, do you know?
Yeah, generally, if you're developing outside of the floodplain, you're not required to, you know, evaluate, so from, evaluate from a structural impact. So, you know, the way this was designed, you know, you can see that the structures are outside of the 100-year floodplain. The, you know, the bigger concern would be more from the standpoint of, you know, if there's a flood situation and do people, you know, are they, I guess, isolated particularly in this location, but here would be the one that would be concerned? But, you know, overall, I think the bigger question is, well, can they get out by foot? You know, if, worst-case scenario, if they need to wait for the flood to come down, and there is that opportunity. So from a life safety standpoint, the location of these structures are outside of the, are outside of the floodplain, so to speak.
So we're talking floodplain, this is not considered flood. This is actually considered basically a dam breach. Okay, it's not 100-year flood.
Oh, you're talking like a.
Absolutely. And there are documents, there's documentation at state level concerning the exercise that they, for that dam breach, because that is one of the dams that they're concerned about as far as its failure. I would suggest you probably take a look at that or try and get that information. That's through main emergency management.
Okay.
Okay.
From dam, dam safety, okay.
Yes.
Yep, we will look at, to the, into that at state level. Is there, I'm assuming the public works director there in town would have some initial information to direct us, like they, you know, like a FEMA emergency, or a, I should say, risk, what do they call those? Community risk evaluation reports?
Risk assessment? I can't answer for her, I don't know.
I have, good.
There may be some documentation in the fire chief's office.
Okay, sounds good.
Do you have it?
I'll dig into that, thank you.
All right.
I guess that's the advantage of a treehouse, though, if there's a flood.
It's about as good as it gets, if there's a.
You'd have to build pontoons on the bottom of it.
Okay. I mean, in your application, you asked for a waiver on the paving issue. I think we should talk about that.
Ah.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, sorry, I meant to bring up the waivers. Would you like me to review those requests really quick?
Certainly.
Okay. Correct, so what we're requesting is, so anything over 50 ADT triggers the need to pave. And what we're showing right now is pavement on this section of the road. This development generates 84 ADT per day. And so we have about, this portion over here is about 20 of that, this is 14, if I remember the numbers right, and then we're, hold on, I've got the numbers right here, let me pull those up in my notes. Give you guys a better answer here. We are, maybe I don't, side roads, maybe Diane, you have those, but it's, actually, let me pull it up, Scott's got it right in here in his analysis. But the idea behind the waiver is that we have, yeah, so 50 ADT requires the pavement. What is currently Fimberthel and is going to change generates 40 ADT. And then the, with the Windle, which will change, generates 20. And so then we have essentially another 24 ADT extending about beyond here. So this area, this area, and what extent, what will be the extension of Old Mill Road will all be less than 50 ADT. So we're requesting that we pave this section that would experience the 84 ADT, and we pave that, but then everything else that there'd be a waiver for the gravel road and to allow that. And again, this, you know, that's the technical basis for the request. I think the additional basis for that request is just the light touch on this property and that the gravel road being more in line was really what the developer is looking to do here.
I mean, I understand, I mean, that there obviously is a cost difference between paving and not paving and helps your stormwater if it's, if it's not paved. And I kind of look at your development, and this is going directly into the city street, and what recent subdivisions developments we've approved. One on Route 1A that Steve Grass was putting in, John Bates, which started it, and that was, the accountant owns it, McMullen out on the Bucksport Road. And all of these are residential subdivision close to town going into, you know, either city street or state road, and they're being paved. So I'm just throwing this out for discussion, I'm not convinced that it warrants not being paid. But I'm, I'm not saying, I would say you have to pave it, but I guess I'm saying you have to convince me. I'd like to hear other thoughts from the, from the board, you know, how they look at it. I'd like us to be as consistent as possible. I know there have been some subdivisions, you know, Halloran one that we just did, you know, off Garland Road, but that was, you know, on a road, not a public road, wasn't even, no.
Well, I do remember way back when John was still on, I think, still. And I was sitting where Tom was, and the board granted a waiver for not paving. Then it came back that the board had no authority to do that because it's part of the fire prevention ordinance, and it's the fire chief that needs to grant that waiver. So it's not up to this board to grant the waiver, it's up to the fire chief or it doesn't need to grant the waiver for paving or not paving, because that's where that comes from.
My thoughts here, I understand the gravel road better fits the atmosphere that you guys are going for, and quite likely the atmosphere that the buyers and the residents are gonna, are gonna want. So my thought was essentially that, that it comes down to emergency services, how do you feel about driving a fire truck on gravel roads? And what is your practical experience that was gonna be like?
And that's what it boils down to, is the chief needs to make that decision to grant the waiver.
And from our discussions is that we stand behind, and it's in my fire letter as well, that we, we are fine with an all-weather surface driving for this particular property like we have on many others, like Neville Shore, other stuff like that that have that. Their thing is, is that they have to also adhere to chapter 56, because in there, they also have the standards of how a road shall be built. And so given that, if that's the case, then I will draft a letter up and have chief sign it before the next meeting for the waiver. If that is, if that is what needs to be done.
I think that gets to an important point, because there's gravel roads and there's maintained gravel roads. They can be quite different.
Well, that's why HOAs and stuff like that are created, is to, to have accountability to maintain those roads.
But this won't have an HOA, I don't believe, will it?
No, the developer will be the responsible party. So basically, the developer, HOA, or whoever is the responsible party for that property will be stipulated in their deed restrictions and in, as well as in the final milars that is saying that they will take full responsibility for maintaining, maintaining the road, and there'll be a person of contact on that milars for us to get ahold of if we have potential issues down there. When, if we, if we ride down there to go check cisterns or do whatever, we have somebody to contact for that.
I know you can't speak for the chief, and I kind of wish he was here, because, I mean, down the road, every subdivision, he'll have to make that decision whether the road, you know, the road is paved or not. McMullen has, what's that, a seven lot, 11 lot out off the Bucksport Road.
Yep.
We may be having, you know, 150 lot subdivision coming in back of the Mullen Alley. If he comes in and says, oh, geez, I want a big gravel road, I think, I think we're going down a slippery slope. My other issue too is, it's the developer's issue, but it's also the city's issue, because Old Mill Road is terrible. I've been up there, the first 150 feet is paved, it's about a 20-foot, you have it down as a 20-foot wide road. Then it goes to the gravel road, which is about 15 feet wide, and it's approximately 500 feet to where the iron pipes are, which I'm guessing is the start of your property.
That's about, yes.
Gravel, from what I've been told, it's, you know, during mud season, during rainy weather, it's a terrible road.
Maybe one thing to, one thing to point out that was brought up before that chapter 56, this isn't, the section, the city, the city required section for a private gravel road that, you know, private because it's less than 50 ADT, it's actually almost a 24-inch section of, of sub-bas, base, and then a wearing course. And I think, I think regardless of whether it's paved or gravel, it's gonna be a significant section, and regardless if it's gonna be paved or gravel, it needs to be maintained. We all know that, that over time, if asphalt's not maintained, it gets as bad as a gravel road that's not maintained. So, and, and as I understand it, this is all, these are, these are private roads that will be maintained by the Property Owners Association, which is essentially the developer.
No, no, let me, let me interrupt you, I'm talking now more about, about the public road portion that you have to travel across to get to your roads.
Oh, I see, okay, that's where you're, okay, my apologies, I misunderstood that.
Let's say there's a fire there, I mean, your ordinance, NFPA, 20-foot road, and from what I've seen, you've never varied from that. But you have to go in now, almost 500 feet on a 15-foot gravel road.
Yep, but it's existing, and that's, essentially, that part right there is existing, and that's the city's road.
Yes.
And then when we get to the gate, then it goes to the developers, where then he can now, where there's no, nothing developed, we can spread that out to the 20-foot to get our, to get the, for it to meet NFPA 1, chapter 18, we can meet that, that bypass that we need. The, I guess, is a conversation that needs to happen is, are, you know, are they gonna have to pave up to where it's paved now? Or is the city gonna help with paving from where it ends to where their property begins? Because realistically, what they have right now is, is they have from where their property starts, in, is paved, because that's what they're required to do. So we go from paved to not, for not paved back to paved.
That little paved section that they're gonna do, you're requiring?
Yes.
Now, what is the purpose of that little short?
Because, because they go over the ADTs, so therefore.
And that's just in that section?
Correct. Because then once you split off from that, it goes into private roads and it doesn't go above the ADTs.
But getting back to the city portion, you're, I don't think two fire trucks are meeting each other.
Well, they can't, no. But I can't change, I can't, that, I can't start approaching into somebody's property and tell this developer, hey, you need to take over this person's property and his yard. And then I can't tell him to start taking out the embankment that, that's on the right side going down the property that goes into where the apartments are either.
Does anybody, does city staff even know what the right-of-way is there on the public road?
There's a right-of-way in there.
There's a right-of-way in there. I think it sounds like city staff needs to discuss with the developer, how we'll get that part of the, that Old Mill Road paved.
You know, if you're gonna waive, if you're gonna waive your, your paving requirement for the road, you can, you can actually work with the developer and add something to it, say, we'll waive it for you, but you paved this portion of it. Otherwise, you wait, otherwise you pave the whole thing. So.
So we'll.
So there's a give and take of the whole thing.
I don't see any, from my point of view, I mean, I think the city should consider doing something with that section of road to make it actually passable.
Yeah, and widen it.
And because, I mean, people that have been around know pretty much every, every spring, the people down the Colon Road, this is the same type issue. If people, you know, if people coming out this road in the spring, like people come out Green Lake on the Colon Road, and as bad as the Colon Road is, this is the same situation. But this portion is a public road. No ifs, ands, or buts, the Colon Road is a whole nother story. But.
I think our code officer knows about the Colon Road a little bit.
You know, these gentlemen, you know, they're people that are coming here. They're not gonna be too happy coming out, nice development, coming out to, oh, you better make sure they got four-wheel drive.
Am I incorrect, or is that a city issue?
It probably is both.
So kind of, I think that's a discussion for, for the city, the manager, the, I think the road committee is meeting, they've had one meeting. You know, maybe this is something that everybody gets together, forms a plan, to see how each hand can help the other.
Like I said, I think, yeah, we just have to get together and have that discussion about how to get that portion of Old Mill Road paved.
Well, not just paved.
Paved and widened.
Paved and widened.
There's a huge boulder there, you're not gonna, I don't think you're going widen it to the left, because there's a huge boulder there. There's a utility pole to the right, but there's no line right, right across from this huge boulder. There's a, utility pole to the right, but there's no line right, right across from this huge boulder. Uh, the utility pole that doesn't have any lines on it. But I guess the first thing to do would be find out what the right of way is. Perhaps, but I was a little confused on the storm order, your storm order calculations. Maybe you could explain.
You bet.
C five.
And, and I, I'm not sure, just to also point out, within the overall application report, Scott put together a fairly significant stormwater write-up. And I just, just to make sure that that's recognized by the board as well. But overall, I'll just summarize kind of where Scott.
I'm looking at the chart on C five.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm going to say, I'm looking at your chart on C five, the existing conditions, proposed conditions.
Yes. Yeah, this, this chart right here?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes. So, yeah, to summarize existing conditions, and I'll just focus right here on the, on the hundred year. So pre-developed peak flow rate running off of the various drain, there's, well, let me step back. We've got drainage A, drainage B, C, D, and E. And then those were calculated, um, peak runoff for each one of those. And then really the overall peak runoff where those calculate, calculations go are a summation of those, you know, thirty-one, um, CFS. And then similarly in the proposed conditions, so taking into account the roadways and the increased runoff from the construction of the roadways as well as from the actual homes themselves, the tiny homes and the treehouses, an increase to thirty-five point nine four. So from an overall storm, so there is an increase. And, and the intent of the plan is to provide attenuation, but as well, as well as the LID, low-impact development, uh, BMPs. Most likely, and we're working this out for the final submittal, a, um, a, uh, either a extended detention basin or a bio-retention swell being used for both the detention requirements as well as the BMP for stormwater management. The, the overall basins, you know, discharging directly to the river. One thing we are looking at at the bottom of basins where the discharge is, so this is at the bottom of the basin, right, at the river. We're verifying at the state level whether or not detention's even desired. Sometimes it's better to discharge that more quickly just into the, when at the bottom of a basin. We are looking into that. But overall, the plan is definitely the LID, the low-impact development, um, making sure we're meeting those. And that will be a combination of vegetative strips, I should say, as well as the bio-retention or bioswells that we're talking about at this point.
So what I'm gathering, you, you still have to kind of fine tune your stormwater plan to, to get the proposed, post-development numbers down below pre-development?
Yes. We, well, we definitely have to meet the state requirements for the BMP. I think what I'm saying is there may be an opportunity because of the location of this development within the basin that's immediately adjacent to the river. Sometimes, so, let me go back here. Like, let's say this is part of a bigger basin that's a hundred acres. I don't know exactly what it is yet. But we have upstream flow coming down here. And a lot of times at the, when you're at the bottom of this basin, rather than detaining stormwater runoff that is going to intermingle with upstream runoff, the state will prefer that that is not detained, that it is treated. So from a water quality standpoint, it's treated and released ahead. So that's one thing that we're working out. If the state wants us to detain, then yes, absolutely, we'll, we'll add the detention requirements to get the pre and post where they need to be. But there is more detail we need to work out prior to going to, prior to final.
Okay. I guess, getting back to your road, specifically the bridge issue.
Yes, sir.
Is, if I recall, eighteen feet wide?
Yes. Correct. Approximately, yes.
Actually, I mean, I don't know if anybody else is interested, but actually I wouldn't mind doing a, a site visit to actually take a look at that bridge. Other people are interested in seeing the bridge or, or even if you haven't gone up to Old Mill Road to see what I'm talking about. I mean, I wouldn't mind, you know, is, is that, you know, bridge good enough for a fire truck to go over now or?
So then, yeah, so the intent there is, is with the final submittal is that, um, and I think we've actually found the engineer to take a look at that, but that we need to provide an engineered analysis of that bridge at final to confirm that it'll handle the fire truck.
Okay. Or, or other construction vehicles have to go across to build your houses, but, uh, I mean, I'd like to do, I don't know if any, anybody else wants to go, but, I mean, I'd be interested in doing a site visit, especially to, to take a look at the bridge, just to give me an idea what it, what it looks like and if there's any other concerns. I mean, the eighteen feet width doesn't appear to be a problem with the fire department.
We can schedule that.
Okay.
If anybody else.
Not that we have anything else to do.
They, they may end up, if they have to do any construction or do anything to the bridge, they're going to bring it up to twenty feet up to the standards. But if they don't have to, um, the NFPA one allows for a, for a, for the AHJ to lessen the road width if required. And if for, there's no sense for them to sit there and put the extra effort in to cause more damage to that river stream or whatever it is. Create more silt if the bridge is more than capable of handling pain level required.
I might be interested in taking a look, but is there a limit to the number of members that can go simultaneously to avoid the meeting?
I believe I have to do a public notice anyway, so I don't think so.
Would we do it prior to the meet, the actual meeting?
Yeah, it would be separate, hopefully separate from the actual.
Well, the same day, same week.
Oh.
Go out at four thirty.
I don't know if it has to be separate, but I'd have to do the same, like, count, like, schedule for the, like, a public notice and everything like that. If I can, I'll look into that.
Okay, I get it. So because you're doing the public notice, there's no limit on the number of members that can take?
I believe you have.
Yeah, we had a notice meeting. We've done.
Like, we, we can't just ourselves go up there as a group?
Indiv, well, as long as you don't have a forum.
Individual.
Yeah, individually and then don't talk about it. Yeah, you could go on your own.
I can't tell you where to drive.
I didn't feel like walking through the woods the other day. One other question for Tom, uh, Goldberry Way. It's kind of right in the middle. Yep. Does that need a turnaround or pull in there, back out or?
Yeah, we, uh, we talked about it. Um, I believe they, they're less than a hundred and fifty feet, which is the minimum requirement to have a, have a dead end. They did talk about where the parking spaces were, was creating an additional parking space essentially for the truck to be able to back into and be able to pull back out if need be.
I think that was it.
So Tom, I got a question for you. On your four fire cisterns, is it your intent for them to put bump outs in there or not?
Yes. They're going to have it on their final submission.
Any question?
I have a comment on the last item before the meeting ends. I don't know the formality.
Okay, wait a second.
Yeah.
It'll be a public hearing.
There's a public hearing coming up in two seconds. Opening up the public hearing. Come up to the podium, give us your name, and make whatever comment.
Yep. Agreed. Yeah. My name is Aaron Healy. Sorry, this is my first time doing this.
That's okay.
Um, so I was, uh, going to discuss the previous item. Um, I'm at twelve Down East Highway, um, and, uh, Penelope Pizzeria. I've been there for like a year.
You're on, you're on the wrong project.
Oh, okay. I, I still want to do the last project. I, am I not allowed to do it anymore? I, I don't, sorry, I don't know how this works.
They switched the agenda items.
Well, actually, I don't think I.
No, we didn't.
We didn't do it.
I never heard any, like, ask for comments, so I didn't know.
Sketch points they use that don't, but.
Okay, I can, I'll go away then.
They were supposed to be a public hearing. I, I didn't open the public hearing.
I think what's the, this best way to do it is to let finish this one and then.
Okay, so is there anybody here that wants to make a comment about the treehouse? Okay, so, close the public hearing. Or is there anybody on Zoom? If there's anybody on Zoom, Jason, let us know. It's not, um, something I was going to ask Patrick, where were preliminary plan review of a major use site plan and made, and subdivision? Do we need to, we probably should do that in two motions?
Do one motion.
Do one motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as that one motion specifies both reviews.
Okay.
John, before you move forward, may I sum in the spirit of Rick one more time?
Sure.
So Rick, uh, good, you know, so he just asked that, you know, making a point that, so Old Mill Road turns into a public road to a private road. So where that, what happens is making a very obvious signage that it now becomes private property and it longer is public. And then potentially creating, I mean, he suggests putting a turnout right at the property line or turnabout for people if they do go too far, turn around immediately. I don't know, in his opinion, if maybe, you know, again, letting people just use the roads, this, um, that kind of act as a circle or turnabout would be enough. But if you're adding, if you wind up, I guess a circle would be the best one.
What kind of going along with that brings up, uh, because right now, what it'll look like is, it's probably just a pickup plow truck goes in there. The city plow truck stops. I mean, there is a little T, but none of the big plow trucks can turn around there. So I'm guessing Adam probably plows it with his pickup and backs up. You know, goes as far on the public road to, to your property. So.
So maybe in our discussion of the widening of the road, at that point where it becomes public to private, we can discuss making a wide enough for the plow truck to turn around.
Yeah.
Either that or make a T-turn in there somehow.
There, there is a little T-turn, but it's not big enough. Well, not for, not for the plow truck. Yep. Pickup plow, oh, not the, sorry. Wait a second. This gentleman lives there, I think he, go ahead, Ben, finish up.
Can I comment?
Uh, I'll finish this real quick.
Yep.
Should we talk about the dead ends? Actually, it probably, pretty much is that, because a lot of his concerns were about the extra houses that we're just going to say, you know, twenty years from now, that'll be a problem. Oh, and then, why isn't the snow storage done? Oh, he had a question about the snow storage. Most of it is being added in later phases of the plan. And so he's just wondering why the snow storage isn't being done sooner. I guess because most of it's slated for phase three in twenty twenty-six, but, uh, much of the development is occurring twenty, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-five. I'm just wondering if there would be plans to include that snow storage, um, sooner, uh, throughout the plan, throughout, throughout the development. Trying to look for where early, the early snow storage is located. I'm guessing his concern is for Denver Throbbing. That's part of, that's part of phase one, right?
Um, I think that's still a question.
Oh, so if it's not phase one, I guess.
I, I would assume anything that we do as far as infrastructure, that the snow things will be done at the same time. There's no reason for us to do it later.
Right. And those were Rick's concerns.
Okay. And I will open up the public hearing again, come right up to the podium. State your name.
Bruce Kaminski, I'm the closest of butter. I'm at eighteenth Old Mill Road. I understand all the questions around widening the road and, uh, and the fire department's concerns and all that. I'm fine to wait and hear how, how that all plays out. One thing that, I may have, all I wanted is a clarification because we're talking about public, private, and then, you know, where they're going to pave the road on theirs. Is there some discussion that they might change the public aspect of, of the designation? And, and, and leave it public, you know, leave it, leave it public only up to the second house on the road? I am the third and then this development. What I don't want to make, I want to make sure they understand this, that we're not going to change the definition of Old Mill Road. It's public from where, it is not going to change at all. Because I don't want to become liable for maintaining that road.
No.
And I'm the, I'm, I'm the only one there because where it stops and they take over. I'm right there, folks. I want to make sure that.
That'll stay a public road.
It will always stay that public road as it's designated now.
So we don't have, as a planning board, we don't have the authority to designate or undesignate a road. That lies, so that is with the city council.
Okay.
The legislative body, so we can't, can't discontinue the road.
I've never heard of a public road being turned private.
Oh, I did. I've done it many times.
You have?
Yeah, but it takes a lot of process with the municipal bodies, so.
So that won't occur?
We can't do it. We can't, I can't guarantee the city council would it one day, but I don't think that's been discussed at all.
For the developer, is there any intention to convert the currently public portion of Old Mill Road to private? There's no part of your plan.
I think you're safe.
Pardon?
I think you're safe. I'll close the public hearing. What is the wishes of the board?
So I think where we're at with this is we're going to find incomplete per the, per the items in the TRT report. Is it, I think that's where we're at? Because it's not complete.
Yeah, it's up, I mean, does the board, if we do, and again, do we think it's complete, right? And that's really, that's what this review.
Well, I mean, I think it's clearly not complete. So I think the motion is we're going to find it's not complete per the items. Looking at the, looking down the list, I think they're all detailed in the TRT, so per the items in the TRT report, which is where the developer would go to.
So they'd have to come back for another preliminary review?
They can roll the dice on, uh, well, I guess, I guess I'm not sure.
Because we've done it before where we've approved some preliminary reviews subject, saying finding it's complete, subject to getting all the stuff that we're saying you need to get to advance it to final. We don't have to do that. We could find it incomplete and come back.
So from a process perspective, Matthew, do we have to find this complete with caveats for them to come back for the final? If we find it incomplete, would they have to do this phase again?
Yeah, if you find it incomplete, it would have to get tabled and brought back for preliminary again. And so, can I just add one thing? Staff is comfortable with finding it complete per the necess, necessity to complete the items in the TRT report.
Yeah, but there will be a lot of new information for us to review, subject to that, especially like the stormwater and everything.
If I recall, quite a few. There, there's several items in, in the TRT report. It's not two or three. It's a couple dozen, I think.
A lot of them relate to the water issue, um, which again, we don't have that full report from the third party yet. So that, that may not be as big of an issue, um, just depending on what they say, but I don't have that at this point.
I guess the question for the applicant is, do you have, will you be able to get this, all this information that's required in time for next month's meeting? Or are we looking? Or are we looking at a couple months from now?
For, for final or preliminary?
For final, right? If we were to approve it today to advance it to final review, but subject to the requirements that you include all the Michigan information.
Yeah, we need to, I think it's April 13th is the deadline for the next one, and frankly, we need that long to get all the final design done, final reports, and, you know, a higher level of detail, detail on the plans. Yeah, we, so it wouldn't be next month, no.
I mean, I don't think that really should impact our decision one way or the other, but.
I mean, when it comes to the final, you can always say, you still haven't met him yet.
Yeah, yeah.
And then stop it right there.
Yeah. I mean, I think you're right. I think there's a lot still that needs to be provided. However, the staff, because the staff is comfortable with it, um, I, I think it's, I'd, I'd be okay advancing it, however, uh, there's a lot for us to discuss at the next meeting. But I mean, I also see the merits if the board thinks it just needs to come back for preliminary again.
I'm also comfortable, I mean, it's, it's the, it's the number of the items that caught my eye. If staff are saying it's a lot of small items, I'm comfortable with that.
I wouldn't call them all small, but I think there's two bigger issues and the rest are small.
A manageable set between preliminary and final.
And given, again, they're not coming back immediately next month, I think that they will have enough time to get everything in a row.
So you're comfortable proceeding to the final?
Right, and then again, if it's not done for final, then you can always tell them, you can't.
I think that would be the messaging with the developers, if this is the path we take, it does increase the risk of not finding the final complete, right? But we can do it. I'm good, I'm good.
And I guess most of then.
Well, now you can put that in a motion.
Or how the board views the Old Mill Road issue, because again, is that a city issue or a developer issue? The part about paving the public?
What's that now?
The portion about paving the public part of Old Mill Road, that was like a bigger issue for the board. And I guess it depends on how you view it as a city issue or a developer issue.
Well, I mean, the, the, the public portion of the road, I mean, it's, it's a city issue, I would say in conjunction with the developer to see if they can come to some agreement instead. From the city point of view, I think the city should fix that road up. Is it a good idea for the developer to join forces on that? That, that's up the developer.
But I ask a moment more as, I don't know if the board's considered something like that as a reason not to find a project incomplete before, or to say it's a city issue, you're gonna work on it and then find it complete. It's a, I don't know what the board's done.
Well, no, the public road, I mean, really from, from the application, from the project is nothing that I'm gonna say is, is incomplete because it's 80% city issue and, yeah, maybe 90%, and then I'll say 10% developer. Because, I mean, it obviously affects his project, affects the people that he may live in there, if, or renting the spaces, if they wanna, you know, if, if he's gonna get inundated with a bunch of phone calls, because they're coming to a nice place spending, you know, their money to rent this treehouse for a week, a month, and have to travel back and forth on a bad road.
I, I feel comfortable voting to find, to approve preliminary, subject to the list of two big things and many multiple small things, or however we wanna frame it. It's my thoughts. Otherwise, I think, beyond what's missing, and, you know, I think this is, we've got a, you know, it's a well thought out, and I think they've checked all the other boxes.
A move that we find complete, the preliminary, preliminary plan review of a major use site plan, major subdivision entitled Old Mill Property Development for applicant Tim Stone and owner Arbor House Properties LLC. The proposal is to create a 17 lot major subdivision. The subject property is an approximately 30 acre lot located at 30 Old Mill Road, tax MAC 41, Lot 53, in the neighborhood urban and limited residential shore lot, shoreline zoning districts, subject to the applicant satisfying those remaining items detailed in the TRT report dated February 23rd, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Approved. Now I'll go back to. You can come back now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry. I don't know how this all works, so I appreciate it.
No, it's not your, it's our fault.
Oh, no, it's okay. I was like, do I comment on Facebook or? No, so I appreciate it. My name's Aaron Healy. I'm at 12 Down East Highway. I've been there for about a year. And I'm there just about every day. What I've noticed in that year is, you know, if I had the ability to install an EZ Pass for people just turning around into the parking lot and going back the other direction, I'd probably be able to retire by now. But as you guys discussed, that left-hand turn at Walgreens, if they miss it, they see it, they're going by, they're gonna turn down on Down East Highway. I'm the fir, you, you're not gonna turn around and rent the center, because the parking lot's so strange. Most likely, they're gonna pull into that turning lane and either come through my building and zip back through, zip back around.
This is Fennelly's?
Fennelly's, yes, yeah, yeah. So my concern is with families and kids in the parking lot. Of course, I sell sandwiches, so I'm not psyched about it anyways, but even if it was something else that wasn't, you know, 400 cars a day or whatever they're projecting, that, I get it, I get so many turnarounds already. And, and it's a really dangerous.
I'm sorry, Aaron.
Yes.
Gentlemen? Could we?
Oh, it's okay.
Thank you.
I didn't even know that. Nurse. So, um, I get so many turnarounds as it is. So I just imagine whether, so then, okay, so if they don't turn into my spot, then the only other options are maybe the vacant Rite Aid they discussed, but then they're coming back out across those two or three lanes. If they miss me or they don't go to me, they go to the walk-in care and there's also the temporary, or not the temporary, but the camping lot or whatever, the hotel is there, and you got tourists coming through there who might not know the area well. Or VIP, they're not gonna want, you know, goodwill. So it's a lot of like people getting out of their cars, walking in and out of places, parking lots. So that would be a concern for me. Then, you know, I have employees and myself pulling in and out of that lot all day, you know, every day. And it's a, you gotta sit there for a few minutes even, you know, in the winter time now to get out of there at times, especially at peak time. Sounds like all the businesses that they wanna put in are peak time hours, same as, you know, everything else. So anyways, I just, you know, sort of respectfully ask that you consider that and, you know, that's about it. Appreciate your time and it's, you know. You wanna see, and if you need to see some surveillance footage from, of my parking lot, the zipping in and out of there constantly, it's like, it's, it's pretty crazy, so.
I'm more than happy, I mean, they have to come back at least two more times.
Yep.
And they'll have a better understanding.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to say in front of them. I didn't know the formality, so.
Or you can come in and take a look at what they're proposing and.
Yep.
Well, when's the, so the DOT meetings too are gonna be held here, as it was discussed, and are those noticed the same way as our meetings?
I got this one in the mail, because I'm, you know, it's baseball throwaway.
So I don't know what the DOT does to notice their meetings.
Yeah.
But he'll continue to get a virus notice as for ours.
Well, I think it would be.
If I get your information, I can just tell you if I have a DOT meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, let's just make sure he knows when they are, so he can attest.
Yep, yep, you know, I get it, like, I'm just kind of a, you know, viewer, but just wanted to bring it up when I had the chance, so I appreciate you guys hearing it and.
That's why you get a public notice.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I've only been there for a year, you know, but getting to know the town and the traffic patterns a little better, and it's pretty congested through there. And then also, the other thing I thought of was if they eliminate more cruise ships in the Bar Harbor, that's gonna possibly create more traffic in and out of the island. They all come back down through that way to go back to Bangor if they come that way. So who knows, you know, 10 years, are they gonna eliminate the cruises or more so, if there's gonna be more current traffic? I don't know, you know, but anyway, something to think of, anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should I have comments?
I mean, I just, this update for the planning committee, we had our first plan, or our comprehensive plan steering committee meeting this past, for this week on Monday. And then we have one next week as well to, right now, the steering committee's gonna review the consultants that have turned in proposals, and they're gonna score them, give them to me. The chair and vice chair of the steering committee and myself will interview them early next week. And then at next week's meeting, we'll see, you know, if we're able to select one or we need to push off the selection until next April's council meeting, so decide that then. But the process has started.
So I got a question, Tom. Are you gonna be issuing a new letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Treehouses?
On the treehouses, yeah. See if you can get chief to be here. Tell him we're requesting his presence. See if he would grace us with his presence.
I will try. Now it'd be towards the end of the month, him and DC are gone for.
Of course.
These guys aren't coming back next month.
No, just think they're aiming for May.
Yeah, it won't be next month, it'll be, it'll be in May, probably.
I will try my best.
Maybe, maybe you should give them a call personally.
I can do that.
Add on a site visit, and you wanna try and set a date now?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Let's wait till we get some good weather, man.
You could, because they're not, again, they're not coming back next month, you could wait and see if they're better weather.
We can wait till at least, you know.
I recommend, if, if it's possible, wait till some of the snow melts.
Absolutely.
Before the black clouds come out.
Oh, well.
It'll be gone tomorrow.
I mean, because we can schedule it, you know, via email, but just as soon as we schedule it, then I have.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Instead of bringing snow boots, we're just bringing mud boots.
Well, the snow's not that deep. But yeah, that's fine. Anything else?
Not for me?
Somebody wanna make a motion for a German?
Do a German.
Okay. All in favor? Well done.